Reporting, I'm live.
Great. Thank you, Caitlin Sullivan. And good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Rob Champetti. I have the pleasure of serving as the zoning Board of Appeals Chair. And I want to welcome everyone to the Newburyport CBA hearing for the the hearing date of four twenty six, two thousand and twenty two. It's now seven P M. So we will start things off. It's a fairly short agenda this evening. We have all but one application. Proponents have requested continuances. So we'll go through the formalities of starting our our meeting, establishing a quorum, taking role. And then we'll get right into the continuance request so that those folks can get their dates. And anyone who may be here logging on is just members of the the city. We'll know that if you're here to speak in connection with those applications, you you don't need to stick around. And you'll be able to hear earlier versus later when to come back before us. So without further ado, I'm going to begin by calling the role and then introducing the board. We'll establish the quorum and then we will get right into the business. So I'm calling the role, members of the Newburyport Zoning Board of Appeals for the agenda of the Newburyport ZBA of April twenty six, two thousand and twenty two. Calling the role, please answer either I present or here. Mr. Mark Moore.
Here.
Mr. Stephen Delisle. Mr. Ken Swanton.
Here.
Mr. Walter Bud Shannon.
Here.
Gregory Bennett.
Here.
And Rob Champetti, I'm here. That is for in the affirmative. I I don't know if Stephen's just a little bit delayed logging on. So we will wait for him to arrive. But in the meantime, we do have a quorum. And for purposes of this evening, I always indicate who our voting members are. We have who are five voting members will be. For this evening, it will be myself, Mr. Mark Moore, Mr. Gregory Bennett, Mr. Walter Bud Shannon, and Ken Swanton. Will be our five voting members.
I just saw that Stephen has joined us.
Oh, great. Steve, Stephen, if you can hear us up, just respond. I were just taking the the role. Mr. Stephen Delisle.
Here.
Excellent. All right. So our five voting members this evening will be Mark Moore, Stephen Delisle, Ken Swanton. Walter Shannon, Rob Champetti, and our associate member Gregory Bennett will will be serving in any capacity, will be deliberating and voting. I'm sorry, deliberating and participating in every way and voting on any matter that requires the recusal of any other member. But with that, I can establish that we do have a quorum for this evening. Also attending this evening, we have Caitlin Sullivan, our city planner. I do not see Andy Port this evening, but we do have Ms. Gretchen Joy, our keeper of the minutes. So without further ado, I'm just going to walk through quickly what we do, how we do it, and then jump into our public hearings with respect to the applications that require continuances. And then we'll be moving forward on the full hearing on nine Barton Street, which is the only application moving forward this evening. For those that aren't familiar with ZBA or any public hearing via Zoom, what we do is I will go through the call of the role. I will go through the after establishing a quorum, the public notice. It's the public notice that's been published in the Daily News as well as sent out to any of Butters. I'll read essentially the name of the applicant, the address, and a quick description of what relief, what zoning relief is being sought by the applicant. That is whether it's an appeal, whether it's a special permit, whether it's a special permit for nonconformities, and then a brief further descriptor on exactly what it is the applicant seeks to do, so that anyone listening can understand exactly what they're asking for, generally speaking. After I read the public notice, we'll open the floor to the applicant to present the application. And the applicant will then present. We'll close that portion of the public hearing. We'll then go to public comment. That's when any member of the public who's attending can just simply raise your hand by clicking on the raise hand icon on your Zoom screen. We will unmute your mic. I'll recognize you by name or by telephone number if you happen to be calling in, but I don't see any call in participants this evening. So if you just want to raise your hand, we'll recognize you and just give your name and address for Ms. Joy so that it can be recorded in the minutes and then just speak your mind. We ask that you keep it to two minutes. We do have discretion. I almost always grant it within reason. So just be courteous and and we will extend every courtesy, of course, as well. And and don't feel like you need to come down on pro or con for against. Just simply raise your hand and speak your mind. Whether you're for, against, or somewhere in between. After we finish that and go through any hands that are raised, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. And then we go to questions from the board. Questions from the board are essentially that we, as members of the ZBA, will go through upon my calling on each of our ZBA members, any questions they may have. Questions of the applicant, the applicant's professionals, they will oftentimes adapt questions that may have been raised by any member of the public who may have spoken. So rest assured, if you've given a public comment, don't feel as though you've been ignored if you ask a question, even if it's not rhetorical or intended to be, and you don't hear a direct response. We don't, we don't do so with an intention to be rude or discourteous. It's merely under the Roberts rules that we we listen to all of the questions. You won't hear a response from us directly, but rest assured, we will be listening, taking notes. And a member of the ZBA or more will will very often adapt some version, if not the actual language of your question in the questions from the board segment. After we go through questions from the board, I close that portion of the public hearing. We go into the final portion of our hearing before a vote's taken, which is the deliberations hearing. This is when we think out loud for the benefit of all, the applicant, the proponent applicant, the any of Butters, members of the public, and everyone in between. You essentially will hear us deliberate one at a time, as I call on each member. The legal merits and whether the criteria, under the legal criteria for that zoning relief that's being sought, has been met in our opinion. And we'll toil over that out loud and and sometimes members of the board will will pose questions back and forth to help that that through. Once we've gone through that and you'll hear, you'll hear every member's thought and sentiment with regard to what they've heard. I will then close that portion of the public hearing, which is the deliberations portion. And we go to the final step in this process, which is a vote. In order for a an application to be successful, it must have at least three, I'm sorry, four votes in the affirmative from our five voting members of the ZBA this evening. And when we present the the vote, it's actually in the form of a motion to approve. These are the modified rules of, you know, Roberts rules of procedure, which we use in governing our board. It's it's an informal version of Robert's rule. So any applicant, I'm sorry, any applicant's application will be brought to the floor by a member of the ZBA posing a motion to approve. That doesn't mean that that member intends to support the motion or supports the application. It's merely the procedural mechanism by which that application is advanced to a vote. Once a motion is made by a member in the form of the affirmative motion to approve, and then seconded, I will call the role and we'll take the vote. We'll go through the list of our voting members. And if the application receives four or more votes in the affirmative votes of yes, then the app, then the motion carries and the application is approved. So essentially, that's the lay of the land. And without any further deliberation, as they say, I will jump right into our business this evening, which will begin with the sequence of the agenda. We'll go through each application slightly out of sequence to get through all of the applications that have where folks have requested further continuance. Get those done so that if you're here for that, you know in advance. And then the only application to actually go forward in on its merits will be nine Barton Street. We'll do that one after we get through all of the continuances. So starting with Caswell Restaurant Group, this is the first matter of the public hearings. Caswell Restaurant Group in care of Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman and Costa LLC. It's seventeen twenty one State Street. This matter was continued from three twenty two, two thousand and twenty two. And it's appeal of the zoning determination that the property is subject to the downtown overlay district. The applicant's attorneys, attorney need and and attorneys with me telling me cost have requested a further continuance. I can't, let me just take a quick look here. I'm not sure if anyone's here from me telling me Costa. And if so, whether they wish to be heard. If not, we can just simply take the vote on the request.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you can hear me, but this is Brian Winner from Mead Tellerman and Costa.
Yes.
Lisa Meads.
Yes.
We don't need to be heard on this matter. I think the letter speaks for itself, and we're happy to rest on the request as put forth in the letter.
Very good. Thank you, Attorney Winner. We'll we'll proceed with a vote based on the the written request. And with that, I will. Oh, and do we have? Do we have Caitlin? We have a date again for the request. And my apologies, I I know that we have that. I just set that aside somewhere.
Yes, the applicant is requesting to continue to the meeting of five ten twenty two.
Five ten twenty two. Very good. Members of the ZBA, the request has been made by written request of the applicant's attorneys to continue this application to five ten, two thousand and twenty two. Do we have a motion to approve in a second for the continuance?
Mr. Chair, if I could, I believe we have been notified that the docket for the tenth is is full already.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's correct. Thank you for that. We are so Attorney Winner, we, I know your request was for the tenth. And as our Vice Chair, Mr. Moore, points out correctly, our docket is full up. And we have a, we passed a bylaw few several meetings ago where we, in the interest of everyone's patience and getting through the business of every hearing, we we limit our docket to five applications and we're we're more than there. So I I wonder if you'll entertain a, do you have a preference on on a hearing date thereafter? Or do you want us to just slot you in when we can fit you in on the very next hearing?
I understand completely, Mr. Chairman. Again, Brian Winner, I think I was advised that your next meeting was full. So the next available slot, I think would be acceptable.
Okay. And that would be our next available slot. Looks like it's going to be the twenty fourth and that, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moore. So members of the ZBA, we have a motion to approve the applicant's modified request to continue their application further to the hearing date of May twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty two and a second.
So moved, Mr. Moore.
Stephen Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Motion's made by Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Delisle on the applicant's request to continue their application to five twenty four, two thousand and twenty two, calling the role. Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mistress, Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Yeah, given that the applicant's making a good faith effort to work this through with the planning board, I can support this. Yes.
Very good. Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
And Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's six in the affirmative. The eyes have it. The motion carries. Matter is continued to five twenty four. Thank you, Attorney Winner. Okay, moving now to the next application. This is a matter of Mark Drago care care of Lisa Mead Mead Tellerman and Costa LLC, three Q Street. This application was continued also from three twenty two, two thousand and twenty two, and it's a special permit for nonconformities to allow the modification to a previous previously approved special permit for nonconformities and allow the reconstruction of an accessory structure requiring relief for new a new footprint and increased height in the pied. I suspect Attorney Winner, same date, five twenty four, if it's available. And we can proceed on the request.
That would be terrific, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Attorney Winner. Okay, members of the ZBA, motions, I'm sorry, the applicant's request is five twenty four. Do we have a motion to approve the continuance with a second to five twenty four?
So moved, Mr. Moore.
And seconded, Mr. Shagnon. All right, motions made by Mr. Moore and seconded by Mr. Shagnon on the applicant's request to continue to five twenty four, two thousand and twenty two, calling the role. Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Delisle.
Yeah.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Shagnon.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
And Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's six in the affirmative. The eyes have it. Motion carries in that application on three Q Street is also approved to continue to five twenty four. And thank you, members of the ZBA and Attorney Winner, going to the next application with a request to continue. This is Walden, really, really LLC care of Lisa Mead Mead Tellerman and Costa LLC. The property address is two hundred dash two oh eight Merrimack Street, again, continued from the hearing date of three twenty two, two thousand and twenty two. This is a two-part application of variance to modify two thousand and eleven variance by adding an additional fast food use at the rear of the structure, as well as a special permit for nonconformities to remove a portion of the latter added one-story rear addition and construct a new one-story addition in its place. This matter, I imagine if we have the space, Attorney Winner, you're looking for five twenty four again.
That would be correct, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good. You're feeling it. You're filling the docket right up. All right. So the request members of the ZBA has been made to push this matter or continue this matter to five twenty four, two thousand and twenty two. Do we have a motion and a second on that request?
So moved again, Mr. Moore.
Second, Ken Swanton.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Moore, on the motion seconded by Mr. Swanton, calling the role, Mark Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Delisle.
Yeah.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
And Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's six in the affirmative. The eyes have it. The motion carries and the application on two hundred dash two oh eight Merrimack Street is also approved to continue to five twenty four, two thousand and twenty two. Lastly, on our business this evening, we have the application of Joseph Cullen and Robin Wallace care of Lisa Mead Mead Tellerman and Costa LLC. This is the application for four seventy ninth Street, also continued from three twenty two, two thousand and twenty two. This is a two-part application as well of variance, requesting a variance to allow for the creation of a third story and a special permit for nonconformities, requesting permission to create an upward and lateral extension of a pre-existing nonconforming structure to allow, again, that third floor and added deck area. Caitlin, on this, where do we stand on the docket for five twenty four? Because I know we just moved
three. We have room for one more.
Okay. All right. Well, Attorney Attorney Winner, you're the winner here. It's going to be, it looks like you you filled the docket of five twenty four. I imagine we can proceed on the request for five twenty four.
Yes, sir, and thank you.
Very good. All right. Members of the ZBA, we have the request, five twenty four. This will close out our docket for that hearing date. And do we have a motion and a second?
So moved, Mr. Moore.
Second, Ken Swanton.
Very good. Motion's made by Mr. Moore and seconded by Mr. Swanton, calling the role on the applicant's attorney's request for Attorney Winner's request to continue to five twenty four, two thousand and twenty two. Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Delisle.
Yeah.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Shagnon.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
And Rob Champetti, I also vote yes. Six in the affirmative. The eyes have it. And that application, that motion carries that application to also continue to the hearing of May twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty two. Thank you, members of the ZBA and Attorney Winner. Thank you for for your patience on that and your help. And so with that, we will back back up to the only app and any member of the public who may be logged in. If if you were here to to offer your thoughts or your comments in connection with any of those applications, just please know that these matters will be taken up in the public hearing that we will have on May twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty two. There's no need for you to to stay logged on unless, of course, you wish to. But there the business that if that's why you were here this evening, that is now going to be heard on five twenty four. Okay, so now going back to the application, the single application that will be going forward this evening. This is the, I'll read the public notice. This is the application of Christopher Adam and Amber Klein Adam care of Lisa Mead Mead Tellerman and Costa LLC. This is the address for nine Barton Street. It's a continuation of the hearing on March twenty second, two thousand and twenty two. It is a special permit for nonconformities to remove an existing one-story bump out from the rear of the structure and construct a new two-story addition to part to a portion of that rear. And speaking on behalf of the applicant is Attorney Brian Winner. Attorney Winner, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Just for the record, my name is Brian Winner. I'm a partner at Mead Tellerman and Costa. I see that you have my or our PowerPoint presentation up. I'd like to introduce Eileen Graff, the architect on this project, who will be speaking briefly after me. And I believe I also have Ben Taylor, another attorney from my office as well on the Zoom this evening, who has assisted with this application. So I would like to begin by just going over what's on the PowerPoint presentation, which is an overview of the the project, the special permit, the relief we're looking for, and how we feel we meet the criteria that you're going to have to address this evening, hopefully at the conclusion of of the public hearing portion of this application. So with that, if we could just turn to the first slide. As you heard from the reading of the public hearing notice, we're looking for a special permit concerning a nonconforming structure. What we have here is a home located in located in the R two and D C O D District. It's a single-family home that was built around eighteen seventy five or somewhere around that time period. It was listed as contributory in the district data sheets. What we're addressing here in this application is just one portion of that structure. And that's this rear bump out. It's a one-story bump out that was added to the back portion of the structure, the rear portion of the single-family home in the backyard lot somewhere prior to nineteen sixty nine. So when we get to the next slides, you'll see the cards that we're referring to there. It doesn't appear on the assessor's map from nineteen twenty four, but it does show up later in the timeline around nineteen sixty nine. And we didn't find any further records with respect to the age. As you'll see, we make note later in the PowerPoint presentation that this was presented on the D C O D side and the demolition delay was released at the meeting on March twenty fourth. So this parcel has a number of existing nonconformities, in particular, the lot area. Ten thousand square feet required. The lot has four thousand seven hundred and eighty five. It's nonconforming as the frontage as well. Ninety heater required, where we have fifty feet. It's nonconforming as the front yard setback. There's two point nine feet on the front yard setback, or twenty five is required, left side setback as well as nonconforming. Ten feet required. You have four point seven and the lot coverage. So this one is what's triggering the special permit, as I'll address in a second. There's a maximum twenty five percent. We currently have thirty eight point six seven. And as you'll hear me address in a moment, this project would extend that by less than one percent. We're talking point seven eight percent. So a very de minimis extension of that lot lot coverage. So if we could go to the next slide, please. So as you'll see noted at the bottom, yeah, that's right set up. So this is the nineteen twenty four assessor's card. So you can see the the accessory and the primary single-family home structure there. Doesn't note the bump out at all. If you go on to the next slide, this is the nineteen sixty nine assessor's field card. And you can see drawn in there and highlighted, that's the that's the bump out we're talking about. Now, the next couple of slides, we have different photographs. So you can get a a visual sense of of what we're talking about. So there's the bump out on the rear. So obviously, that's the existing one-story bump out on the rear of the property. And the dimensions there are about six point one feet by eight point three feet. So a very, you know, modest, small structure, some current concerns about the the current condition of it. And some slight disrepair there. And so the owners or clients, Christopher Adam and and Klein Adam are looking to remove this bump out and replace it with a slightly larger structure that that goes up another floor. So we'll show you some elevations on that in just a moment. If you go to the next slide. So here's another view. And you can see the bump out in the back. So this is from the property directly behind the Adams' property. And you can see, you know, just the roof line there and the top of that window kind of sticking out. So it gives you a sense of of what's visible, you know, from the yard behind it. And you can imagine, and we'll we'll show you a picture in just a second on the elevations of what it would look like if it extended a little wider and a little higher, which is what we're proposing to do. If you go to the next slide, please. So this one, I don't know if you can zoom in on this one, because it it takes a little bit of an eagle eye to pick up on this. But this is also looking at the property towards the rear of nine Barton Street. And to give you a sense of of what the the visibility really is like for this thing, if you look at that shed structure and the roof line just peeking out, just barely peeking out from the sort of top right of that is the existing bump out. So you can, from this view, you can, you can barely even see it at all as it currently exists. We could go to the next slide. So we have some different. There we go. Different viewpoints of what it looks like now. And the next slide. Sort of getting a little closer here. And the next one. Closer still. Then, you know, you can hold it on this one, if you will. So here, we're back to the front. So you can see it's not visible from the public way. It's entirely behind the property. So from this angle, you can't see it at all, and you won't be able to see the new proposed structure. And if we can go on the next slide. Also from the front of the property, but now we're we're on the other side. We're on the the right side of the property, looking towards it. And again, the takeaway from this is that it's, you know, entirely behind the house. You can't see it from the public way. So if we go to the next slide, please. So right after this one, you're going to see the the renderings or the site plan and then the renderings. And this is an overview of of really what we're proposing to do here. So like I mentioned, we're going to remove the existing one-story bump out. And we're going to construct, if approved, this two-story addition, which is going to have a slightly larger footprint. So the existing footprint, as I mentioned, six point one feet by eight point three. The final footprint is going to be six point one by fourteen point four. So we're talking about an addition of just thirty seven point two square feet in terms of the 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 floor area there. So it's a very modest addition. And that's, it doesn't go any farther into the rear yard. It's just a little wider. It's just a little higher. And the only consequence of that in terms of nonconformities is that it it increases that lot coverage, like I said, by less than one percent. It's just point seven eight percent. So the height of it is noted there. It's about eighteen feet by two and three quarters inches. So it's shorter than the the single-family dwelling itself. So the the principal structure, the primary structure, you know, it's it's subordinate to that. It's lower than that roof line. And it sort of fits, if you will, sort of tucked in to that that back facade on the building. And as I mentioned before, it does trigger the D C O D, oh, excuse me, not trigger the D C O D, because we're moving less than twenty five percent. The H C did review and approve the plans, and they released the demo delay, like I said, on March twenty fourth. So the next two slides are, if you could, more, thank you. So here's the site plan indicating where this proposed new structure is going to go. And give you the best sense, if we could move on to the last slide or the next slide here. So here are the elevations. And can give you a clear picture, obviously, the existing on top and the proposed below, and it'll give you a sense of what this addition is proposed to look like. So you can see where the existing bump out is. You just go right down the middle. I know you're familiar with these. You can see it's going to get a little wider, but it's going to follow the same line across. So it's not getting any deeper, the rear yard. It's going to go up another story. And again, kind of said this a couple of times, but it's only adding a little bit of additional square footage and lot covered. So really, a modest addition, just to provide some additional usable space in place of somewhat aging enclosed bump outs, one-story structure now. So Ms. Graff is going to have some more comments on sort of the architectural considerations that went into this. But obviously, as the lawyer, I'll just say a few things, that not being my expertise. But the intent here obviously is is to create a structure that looks like it was there all along, that it completely harmonizes with the existing architectural features. And it will look like it just grew in place and certainly belongs and wouldn't be any more prominent or or otherwise stand out. And it looked like, it should look like, it was always part of the building, always meant to be part of the building and should seamlessly integrate. So that's certainly the intent here. And I expect Ms. Graff will address that when I finish up here on the next slide. Last but not least, obviously, when the board closes the public hearing portion of the evening, you're going to have some deliberations to consider. And those are the special permit findings that you're going to have to make. The first one should be relatively straightforward, that there'll be no additional nonconformities. And that's absolutely true. We're not creating any new nonconformities. The only nonconformity that we're talking about here, and it already exists, is the lot coverage. And again, we're talking about less than And again, we're talking about less than a percent. On criteria number two, that the proposed change will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. There are a number of factors that we would urge you to consider that the existing structure is in poor condition. We're replacing it with something new, up to code and architecturally consistent, compatible and in harmony with the existing structure. The new addition, of course, is going to be subordinate. It's just a bump out. It's it's nothing that stands on its own. So it'll still remain subordinate and subservient to the existing structure. The new proposed structure is hardly visible. It's not visible from the public way. It's hardly visible from the rear, although, as you could see from the photographs we took, you will see, you know, a little bit of the top of it. Primarily from the property directly behind it. So it's modest in size. And again, we're trying to match the styles and structures of the existing building. It's shorter than the the home, so it it's not going to dominate it or even match it. It'll certainly be subordinate to it. Only adds a little bit to the building footprint. And then the last thing I wanted to note is you should have in your file and have seen already that we received letters of non-opposition from at least four of the abutters from eleven Barton, from six Barton and from seven Barton. And the last one was from sixty Marlboro. And the reason why I want to highlight that one is that's the property directly behind this one. So they have signed a letter of non-opposition, essentially supporting the project, which from their perspective, they would be the ones with the the direct line of sight at this in any event. So they have supported us in this endeavor. And we're hoping that the board will seek it to approve it for all of those reasons. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions, but I'd like to turn it over to Eileen Graff.
Thank you, Attorney Winner. And I think if we switch to slide fifteen, maybe just to add a little bit. Attorney Winner has explained the project pretty clearly, but I just want to be able to add or speak to some of the materials of of this addition. And as mentioned, it's it's very minor of of an increase in its footprint, but it's a pretty significant change for for Chris and Amber and the way they live on the first floor level. It's adding some much-needed mudroom space. The existing one-story space is very low in ceiling height, very small in footprint. It it's, you know, we can't but feel compressed in that space because because of the low, low ceiling. So by by creating or changing its footprint and ceiling height in there, it dramatically helps to support their day-to-day use. And then on the second floor, adding a a bathroom. They currently have, you know, a a family of five. They have three girls. They just want to create one more bathroom as these girls grow up and are needing more and more time met bathroom mirror time, if you will. But so the the change to the way they live by adding this second floor space would 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 be huge. So what we have in front of you is is just a simple structure, taking something of of in kind and materials. We're we're cladding it with wood, wood clavards to match the existing likewise. The windows and doors will match the the existing replaced windows. They are Marvin window, which they will plan to carry through with this addition. And then a slight change on the top gable end by changing out those windows to be doors to access that flat, flat rooftop. You know, as you can see in the side profiles, we're not going any further into the backyard and just simply just needed to stretch it a little bit in width to create the spaces that they needed. But 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 as Attorney Winner said, it's 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 straightforward in its approach and modest and unseen from the street. But that we hope that you too feel the same with this is a acceptable and modest addition to to this property. And with that, I'll leave it for the board for any questions you may have.
Very, very good. Okay, thank you very much. And I appreciate that information, Eileen, as well. Attorney Winner, was there anything further before we close the presentation portion of the hearing?
I am all set, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for recognizing me and asking when we're here to answer any questions the board may have.
Very good. Okay, well, closing then that portion of the public hearing, I'll ask Caitlin to kindly put up our public comment slide, though I only see four members of the public that have logged in. So any member of the public who wishes to speak in connection with this application, please just raise your hand. We will recognize you. Give you an opportunity to be heard. Going once, going twice. Seeing no hands, I'll close that portion of the public hearing and we'll go right into questions from the board, starting with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very thorough presentation by Mr. Winner and by by Ms. Graff, as usual, especially slide fifteen, that's in front of us here, existing and proposed was really clear. That said, I I don't have any questions.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Moore, Mr. Dela.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no questions either. I had a couple, but they were answered by Ms. Graff towards the end of her part of the presentation. So I am okay. Thank you.
All right, great. Mr. Swanton.
Yeah, I'm familiar with this property. I've walked down this street. This this proposal is really not visible from Barton Street. The coverage is up a little bit, but it's not like this is Plum Island. It's a very small increase. So I, like my colleagues, have no questions.
Very good. Mr. Mr. Shagnon.
No questions, Chair. Great presentation, easy to understand, very straightforward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
I have no questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. And I I share that sentiment. I think it was a great presentation as well and very thorough. So without any further questions from the board, I'll close that portion of the public hearing and we'll go into deliberations. And again, I'll just ask the board members as we deliberate to kindly deliberate both. I'm sorry, deliberate the criteria for the special permit for nonconformities. And we'll begin with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, as as I think the whole board just said, very clear, well well-presented application, thorough as usual. So that being said, we are aware that there are no new nonconformities created by this proposal. It will extend the nonconforming lot coverage ever so slightly. So given that the the minimal increase in in lot coverage from this expanded bump out, adding, you know, a whopping thirty-seven square feet to this, that's very modest proposal. When you look at the second prong of our decision-making process for special permit of size, scale, and massing and and determining whether this would be more detrimental to the neighborhood than what's already there. I I can't find any way to to see this being more detrimental to the neighborhood in any way, shape or form. And of course, the the immediate abutters supporting it is always something we take into consideration. And that's also helpful in determining whether or not it's more detrimental. So for all those reasons, I can support this.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Moore and Mr. Dela.
I'm just going to simply agree with Mr. Moore and everything he said. He stated it very nicely. I can support this project also.
Thank you, Mr. Dela. Mr. Swanton.
Yes, it is truly a benefit that Mr. Moore goes first. You said it extremely well, and I can support it.
All right. And Mr. Shagnon.
I agree with my colleagues, and I think Mr. Moore should always go first. Thank you. I can support it.
Well done. All right. And thank you, Mr. Shagnon and Mr. Bennett.
I agree. It meets the criteria. It's appropriate in size, scale and design. And for those reasons, I would I would support the application.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. And I too draft behind Mr. Moore's articulation of the criteria, and I agree fully with my colleagues. So I can support it as well. If there are no further deliberations, I'll close that portion of the public hearing and ask if a member of the ZBA has a motion to approve and a second.
Since the crowd asked for it, I will go first again, and I will make a motion to approve application for nine Barton Street, special permit, nonconformities, twenty-two dash five.
Good. Motion's made by Mr. Moore. Is there a second?
I'll second that. Stephen Dela.
Very good. Motion's made by Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Dela, calling the role on the motion to approve the special permit for nonconformities. Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Dela.
Yeah.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Shagnon.
Yes.
And Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. The eyes have it. The motion carries and the application for the special permit is approved. Thank you. Thank you, Attorney Winner. And thank you also to to Eileen Graff for your comments as well. We'll we'll move on now to that closes our public hearing business for this evening. And all we have left now is our business meeting. Members of the ZBA, we have before us the minutes of the hearing of April twelfth, twenty twenty-two from Ms. Gretchen Joy. Any comments, changes or revisions that anyone wishes to make? Speak now or forever hold your peace. Anyone?
I move, we approve them. Ken Swanton.
Right. We have a second.
Seconded, Mr. Moore.
Great. Motion's made and seconded on the approval of minutes. We can just respond with aye or nay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any ayes? Any abstentions? No ayes or abstentions. The eyes have it and the minutes are approved. So thank you very much. I have no updates from the chair and and our planning director is not with us this evening. Caitlin, anything that you wish to say or or we?
Nothing at this time. Thank you for asking.
All right, very good. All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
All moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any abstentions or no votes? Seeing none, the eyes have it. And the meeting's adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Quick business this evening.
Thanks. Have a nice evening.
Have a good evening, guys. Cheers.
Bye-bye.